All righty. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates, sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 8th, 2015, and was posted on the bulletin board on Borough Hall 221, South Fifth Avenue on January 8th, 2015, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my right and to my left. Speak into the microphones, please, when you come up to talk, and assistive listening devices are available. Jane, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(Choir singing) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill-Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilman Vine?
Yes, here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Potts?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Kovak?
Here.
Okay, I had hoped to recognize one of our residents who made a beautiful piece of art and donated it to us, but it looks like he couldn't be here this evening, and I'd rather wait until he can make it to talk about it. Okay, we have a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and do I have that proclamation?
It's in your two-side folder.
Okay. Do you have a copy of it here? Okay, excuse me one second.
(Inaudible)
Mayor, while you're waiting for that, I'd just like to note, there is a Main Street minute listed tonight, but we have, I'll be at their board meeting tomorrow night, so they're doing their executive session agenda setting that they need to do, that's why they're not present.
Okay, Councilman George, if you could speak with them for a better night for them, because it seems that there have been many conflicts, and I really think our residents would like to hear some of the activities they have planned, so if they feel there's a better time for them to come, whether it's the first meeting of the month or the second, then we can accommodate that.
And I'll take that to them tomorrow night.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and the Observance of Denim Day are intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of Middlesex County, including lifelong mental health impact, and whereas sexual assault, sexual abuse, and sexual harassment impact our community, as seen by statistics indicating one in 14 girls and one in six boys are sexually assaulted before age 18, and whereas we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors, and whereas staff and volunteers of anti-violence and prevention programs in Middlesex County, including the Rape Crisis Intervention Center and Sexual Violence Prevention Coalition, encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small, and to challenge the social constructs that continue to perpetuate a culture of violence, and whereas the New Jersey Sex Crimes Officers Association and the Middlesex County Sex Crimes Liaison Officers, in connection with the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, are dedicated to ensuring the effective investigation and prosecution of sex crimes in our community through inter-agency collaboration and training, and whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in Middlesex County through prevention education focused on increasing gender equity and bystander intervention, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions, and whereas throughout the month of April 2015, Middlesex County strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now, therefore, I, Gail Brill-Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and that we join anti-sexual violence advocates and support service programs in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution and to end sexual violence, and encourage the observation of Denim Day on Tuesday, April 28th, 2015, given by my hand of the Borough of Highland Park, the 14th day of April in the year 2015. I hope you will all join the rest of us and our staffs in wearing denim on the 28th. Thank you. Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Very brief report. I want to let everyone be aware that as the weather becomes warmer and the kids are going out biking, as we all are going out biking, please remember to wear helmets for your safety, and also that please do not use the sidewalk for bicycling, please use the sharrows. The sharrows are the thing on the sidewalk that look like little bicycles that are painted on. That's what that's there for, it's for everyone, it's a safety path for bikers to travel on. So please refrain from using the sidewalk and use a designated area that is there for bicycle users. Also, on a very serious note, I myself, and I know many persons, have been receiving scam phone calls, someone representing themselves as an official from the IRS department. The IRS does not call anyone and threaten anyone to pay taxes over the phone or to get a credit card or to send money orders to them, so if you're receiving phone calls from persons threatening that they are, they're going to have you arrested and you must pay money immediately within 24 hours or less, that is not from the IRS, please give the IRS a call and they will direct you through the proper channels. Again, I can't say enough that the IRS does not call and make threatening phone calls to anyone or demand payments, and especially they do not call from block numbers. So if you're receiving those calls, call our police department or call the IRS, and just go on the website, or you can call 411, and they'll provide you the number for the IRS, and you can put your claim in there. That's my report.
All right, Councilman Vine?
Mayor, I do not have a report this evening.
Okay, Councilman Potts?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make mention of some different programs and different events coming up. The first is this coming Friday, April 17th, at our Senior Youth Center, from 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock, there's actually going to be free vision screenings, it's open to the public, and that's for all ages, not just seniors, and that's this coming Friday. Also, on Monday, the 20th of April, at 12 noon, back by popular demand, they're going to have a game show in connection with their senior luncheon, that's going to start at 12 o'clock. Further down the road, just save the date for the Senior Citizens Prom, which is going to be Thursday, June 18th, actually. For the youth, we have the Youth Theater Company going to be doing their performance of Annie Junior, that's going to be at 6:30 on Thursday, May 14th, and that'll be held at the Highland Park High School Auditorium, that's always a very excellent program, they've moved it now to the high school and has a much nicer venue, and I encourage you to try to come out and participate, or support the youth in their production. We actually have two adult and two youth vacancies on our Recreation Advisory Committee, so if anyone's interested in that group, if you could complete an application and submit that to the Borough Clerk's Office, that would be great. Again, two adult and also two youth vacancies on the Recreation Advisory Committee. Just looking down the road, we have the Memorial Day Parade coming up, it's already the middle of April, so that'll be here before you know it, that's going to be held on Monday, May 25th. And then last, I want to mention that the summer camp program registration forms are out, so if anyone needs to pick up information, please do so, and we're also accepting applications for camp counselors for our program, and those applications must be received by April 30th, so you've got a couple weeks for anyone who'd be interested in applying as a camp counselor. Thank you.
Councilman Potts, how old do you have to be to be a camp counselor?
There's different levels, there's counselors in training and also full counselors. Andrea's here from our Recreation Department, specifically-
The volunteer positions, you have to be at least 14 for the actual job positions, at least 16.
Okay, so just so everyone can hear, for volunteer camp counselor, junior counselors, I assume, what counselors in train-
Counselor in training.
Counselor in training, 14.
Okay, counselor in training is a volunteer, and that's age 14, and actual counselors are-
16.
16, and they get paid?
They do get paid.
Okay.
Those are junior counselors.
Junior counselors, and then-
And we have tiers, we have regular counselors, which would be usually about 18, and then our head counselors, which are certified teachers or equal.
Okay, so regular counselors are about age 16 and up?
16 for like the junior counselors, 18 for the regular counselors, and then college graduate for heading.
Okay, so 16, 18, and 20-year-olds are different levels of paid counselors, so, and if anyone is interested in a position, how do they apply?
On the Borough's website, employment opportunities.
Okay.
You can go right and do that.
Okay, so just so everyone can hear, to apply for a counselor position, you can find the application on the Borough's website.
(Inaudible).
Okay, or come into the Senior Rec Center and see Andrea. Thank you. All done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilman George?
Thank you, Mayor, just briefly, with regard to the zoning ordinance changes to allow for more contemporary changes, we had our meeting, a very successful meeting, as a result of all the suggestions that everyone has had and all the discussions we've had at our meetings, we prepared a draft ordinance that stated everything that we thought needed to be done, including a possible change to a floor area ratio formula, which is much more encompassing than, you know, the bits and pieces of the zoning ordinance. It was distributed to our members for their comments, we're in the comment period, I've received, excuse me, two out of three right now, the other person wouldn't be available till tomorrow to review it, but I anticipate being able to present that to Mr. Schmier for, to put it in legalese, and be able to discuss it at the next meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Also, with regard to Main Street, just a reminder, the street fair is coming up shortly, some of us have been volunteered, and we're all looking for other volunteers.
Thank you. Councilman Erickson?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Council President Welkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple things. On the agenda tonight is, we'd like to pass for our Environmental Commission to go out for another grant this year, this is to the National Recreation Trail Grant, and they're going for about $6,500, it would be to continue to improve the Meadows Trail that we have, and also to get a bike rack for the area, and also we have a resolution to pass for providing another round of the home energy audits, that was a very successful program that Sustainable Highland Park did a few years ago, and we're going to be offering again this year. We went out to bid, we got two responses, and we've chosen one of them, and look forward to additional information. I believe we're going to wait until the end of the summer and the fall to begin the program, so we're very happy to provide that to people, and basically what you'd get is a low-cost energy audit of your home, that would include, you know, things like your energy efficiency, if you have any drafts, any locations, maybe the recommendations would be you need new windows, or you need more efficient boiler, in any event, it's a very good program, and we'll be presenting that too soon. Additionally, big thanks to artist Jonathan Horowitz for completing a very vibrant mural at our environmental center, he's now become a bird expert, but it's, the mural is covered with native birds and wildlife and butterflies and flowering plants, and it's a beautiful mural, and it really addresses up the place. Thanks, Jonathan, for taking on the project. Just in time for our Earth Day celebration, which is going to be this Sunday, April 19, from 11 to 4, I'm sorry, 11 to 3 o'clock, please come down to the Environmental Center, there'll be music and food and hands-on demonstrations, and it's just a fun time for everybody, last year they had scavenger hunts for the kids, so bring down the whole family, it's a lot of fun. Earlier that morning at 10 o'clock, at the Native Plant Reserve, which is right next door, they'll be planting some trees which they received from the New Jersey chapter of the National Native Plant Society, thanks to Mary Denver and Belinda for getting these amazing plants from the Native Plant Society, they've got, I think, a dozen silvery dogwood, two river birches, a whole bunch of wonderful plants from some of the best nurseries in the state, and they'll be planting those at 10 o'clock, if you want to come by and lend a hand, that'd be really wonderful, thank you. And also, April 24th will be our Walk to School Day, Peter Bilton, Chair of our Complete Streets Advisory Council, and also, he works at Keep Middlesex Moving, is going to be hosting the Walk to School Day again, the children will be meeting in the Stop and Shop parking lot, and then they'll all be walking to, it'll be for Irving kids and for Bartle School kids, and they'll be walking to school en masse, and it's a real fun event. And I'd like to just give everybody an amazing statistic from DPW that have been very busy ever since the ice melted in repairing our roads, as of last week, this is a running total, as of April 1, they have filled 1,015 potholes and over, and nearly 24 tons of asphalt, so thank you, Dawn, and for the crew for fixing our roads, I'm sure this is a continuing list, so thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have just a couple of brief things. First of all, our Capital Improvement Infrastructure Task Force will be reporting back to the council sometime at the end of April, beginning of May, we're all anxious to hear their findings. There will be a, let me back up a second, we all have great appreciation for the many, many volunteers that person our committees, commissions, boards, and this year we are going all out in celebrating them at a special volunteer event evening, which will be held on April 22nd at the Senior Rec Center, there will be many different types of foods donated by almost all our restaurants in town, the Highland Park High School Orchestra will be performing, and there will be certificates of honor presented to many of our volunteers, and we will also have an honorary Volunteer of the Year Award presented to one person. I hope you can all join us there, it is, again, on April 22nd, from 7 to 9 p.m. at the Senior Rec Center. Additionally, we have, we've been planning another very special event, Council President Welkowitz and I have been meeting with a group of dedicated people to help us raise funds, to send some of our high school students who don't get a chance to get away for summer camp to a program run through the Roots Organization that will allow them to get into the country, learn how to mentor other young people, this program helps enforce better self-esteem, and then when they come back to their community, they are required to bring what they learned at the camp back to the community and the high school, and then mentor other young students, who then hopefully will be able to go to this camp. There will be an event that is being held, working with Principal Lassiter at the high school, I'm pulling this all together, and you will be hearing about this as we get a little further along, it's scheduled for May 20th, and it is a fundraiser. Okay, a couple of other things, the Highland Park Ed Foundation is planning their fundraiser, they're a very important organization that helps us fund programs that are not fundable by the Board of Ed or the Borough, and their event is scheduled for May 30th this year, I hope you'll support them. Elijah's Promise is not only a neighbor of ours in New Brunswick, but they are also the people who run a Better World Cafe right here in Highland Park, and they are having their annual fundraiser, which is scheduled for June 8th of this year. And finally, I'm delighted to say that I'll be joining three other mayors from Middlesex County at an event on Thursday morning at the Crown Plaza Hotel in Edison for a Middlesex County Chamber event, where we'll be talking about issues important to the economy and development of our own municipalities, so I hope to be able to report back on not only what we'll be sharing, but what other mayors will be sharing about the progress they've made in their communities. And that's all I've got for you today. Is there any public discussion? No? Seeing none? Clerk, would you report on advertising the cap rate exception ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Calendar ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit's publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any public discussion? May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Vine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, would you report on advertising the public hearing on the 2015 budget?
The 2015 Highland Park Municipal Budget was introduced and approved on first reading on March 3rd, 2015, a summary was advertised in the Home News Tribune on March 6th, 2015, with the public hearing scheduled for April 14th, 2015. Copies of the budget were made available to the public in Borough Hall and the Highland Park Public Library.
May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
(Inaudible) be resolved by the Mayor and Borough Council of Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, that the budget set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein, set forth as appropriation and authorization of the amount. Summary of revenues, general revenues, surplus anticipated $1 million, miscellaneous revenues anticipated, $2,595,525.84. Amount to be raised by taxes for municipal purposes, municipal support, $10,938,636. Municipal library tax, $420,428.16. Total revenues, $14,954,590. Summary of appropriations, general appropriations within caps, operations including contingent, Deferred charges and statutory expenditures, municipal, $1,388,854. Excluded from caps, operations, total operations excluded from caps, $1,080,553. Capital improvements, $100,000. Municipal debt service, $1,941,017. Reserve for uncollected taxes, $280,000. Total appropriations, $14,954,590.
Okay. May I have a resolution to adopt the 2015 municipal water and sewer budget on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Vine?
Yes, and I'd just like to take a moment to explain my vote. I just began a three-year term on the Borough Council less than four months ago, and I understand that the 4.61% tax increase in municipal taxes, which represents about 26% of property taxes in Highland Park, is considered necessary due to prior commitments made by past administrations, and due to the fact that we have not received some $800,000 due to the borough by the State of New Jersey in energy tax rebates. Although I'm voting yes for the 4.61% tax hike, I must say that I am opposed to seemingly frequent significant tax hikes. In addition to being against tax hikes, I'm also not in favor of service cuts, so the question remains, how may Highland Park taxes be stabilized? I believe there are ways for us to stabilize our taxes. One of those ways is to pursue more shared services and cooperative purchasing agreements. To date, this governing body continues to save taxpayers' money by sharing a fire official, a health officer, and animal control with Middlesex County, and a housing director with Woodbridge, but I know our governing body remains committed to engaging local entities, such as the Board of Ed, the library, the Housing Authority, other surrounding municipalities, and Middlesex County, to engage in discussions to pursue more of these types of agreements. I also believe that we need to continue to explore additional ways to stabilize our taxes, so while I voted yes for the proposed 4.61% tax increase tonight, please know that I'm committed to finding ways to put a stop to the seemingly frequent significant tax hikes that our citizens are experiencing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, before I go on, I want to thank you for your comments, Councilman Vine, and want to make note that every single council member feels the same way you do, and has been actively working towards that goal. Okay, Clerk, could you report on advertising ordinance retail sale of tobacco and electronic smoking devices for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 165, by adding Article 3 concerning retail sale of tobacco and electronic smoking devices, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Any public hearing?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, public hearing, any comment? Okay, so please- Okay, so please come up to the microphone. Let's start one person at a time. Okay, Fine, since you're up. State your name and address when speaking into the microphone.
Hello, my name is Eric Silverman, and I live at...
Is it on?
Yes, I just turned it on.
Yes, my name is Eric Silverman. My address is 30 South Adelaide Avenue in the Borough of Highland Park, and I would like to speak out in favor of the ordinance because of the addictive nature of tobacco, because of the fact that almost all people who start smoking start before the age of 21. And right now, the minimum age is 19, that there is still a two-year gap, and that by raising the age, you actually make it less likely that people under the age of 19 or the so-called metaphysical age of 18, where people get certain rights and responsibilities, make it less likely that they will start smoking because they will not be getting cigarettes from friends who are a year or two older than they are. And I just want to conclude by saying that cigarette smoking is the leading preventable cause of death in our country.
Thank you, Mr. Silverman.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jimmy. I live at 11 Montgomery Street, and I'm an intern with New Jersey Global Advisors on Smoke Free Policy, Moser Rocker, Sr. And I am actually in favor of raising the age to 21 because, one, I have a personal story. So I bought a pack of cigarettes for my friend when I was 19, and he was 18. And he still smokes to date, right? And fast forward to years when I'm in college, and the research actually shows that the population that buys cigarettes for kids, 19 to 20, that's the age, 19 to 20. So 19 years old being the age limit to purchase tobacco products or e-cigarettes is not enough. So, and then 95% of, 95% of the pop, 95, excuse me, 95% of the population of adult smokers start before the age of 21. So to conclude, I really, you know, admire that Highland Park is going forward with this because this is the trend. New York City's doing it. They did, all five bars have done it. And Massachusetts has only three, you know, municipalities that haven't done it. So I really feel that it's a great thing. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jimmy. Any other public comment? All right. May I have a resolution to, may, I'm sorry.
We did this. Now, your resolution, your resolution to adopt or reject.
Okay. This is the resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
So moved, to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I'd like to comment on this because I think that it has something to do with where the borough goes in the future. And I admire your comments as an addict of smoking who started at 19 and fought this battle for the last 50 years, sometimes on and sometimes off. I recognize and can feel the physicality of the addiction. Having been involved as both an attorney and a volunteer with addiction services since I was 40 years old, it's just a different kind of addiction. On the flip side, the state regulates at 19 years old, and it is part of a pattern of fractionalization of regulation, an inconsistent regulation where municipalities seek to do more. The fact that this is an admirable person doesn't change that. And as a member of the bar for the last 35 years, that gives me some concern as well. Not so much in this, but whether this borough rightly or wrongly regulates in contravention to the state, even when it's an admirable purpose, it sends an inconsistent message. It perhaps sets us up as being more important than a consistent state law that everyone can understand. I've also spoken to merchants and others since we first proposed this, and there's an inconsistency there. I can tell you that in speaking to the people on the street, the people that actually take the change and make the change, some have said, "I support it, and I sell cigarettes here, but it's a healthy thing, and maybe it'll change." They reminded me, and we laughed about, when, some of us who are old enough to remember, when seatbelts first came in, and the radical argument against seatbelts and the industry marketing that said it was actually dangerous to us. And yet, over the last 30 years since it's been in effect, it's that little two-year-old voice in the back saying, "Daddy, where's your seatbelt?" that changed our culture. And it may sound stupid, but when I first started practicing, I did seatbelt cases as a plaintiff's attorney. And watched the photographs of people who had gone through the windshield and splintered their heads in pieces. So the change comes about gradually. And smoking's changed, it's been around, I shared a recipe book from the early '70s with an excellent recipe for quiche lorraine. And we laughed looking through it because of all the cigarette ads. Literally, a third of the magazine was cigarette ads from the early '70s. And that culture has changed as well. So it'll be a slow culture. Main Street also surveyed the merchants, and they got a very mixed message, and Main Street takes no position. Their merchant members who pay the increment to support Main Street are inconsistent as well. Some support it as a very healthy move, others say, "It'll interfere with my business." But one thing that bothered me, I'll tell you honestly, is that regardless of the merchants with their boots on the streets behind the counter here, their change weighed in opposing it because it's a law, in essence, it's like motor vehicles, it's a loss leader to sell the 32-ounce Big Gulps. And I'll tell you quite honestly, I think that's what threw me over the fence. I would not have supported this ordinance because it contravened state law. However, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
I also vote yes. I'd like to commend Josh Fine for bringing this to our attention and to our Board of Highland Park has done many things in our history to prevent smoking or to hold it at bay. Early on, we made our municipal buildings smoke-free, and also the exteriors, we have prohibited the smoking that you often see in front of buildings. So it's much more pleasant for people to walk into the building now. Our Housing Authority has also worked with new lease in the past couple of years to eliminate smokers within the Housing Authority building. These are all tremendous steps that our community has taken. As I understand it, there's, the younger folk that purchase cigarettes right now, the 18- and 19-year-olds, is a very, is an extremely small percentage of the population that actually purchases cigarettes. But they are the ones that overwhelmingly purchase for their younger friends or their younger siblings. And if we can try to prohibit, try to reduce the amount of smoking from younger children until they get a little bit older, until maybe their impulse, their ability to regulate their impulses is more mature, I think we're doing the right thing. So, thank you.
And just briefly, I think you should all be aware of how long and hard this council deliberated this issue. They did not take it lightly. And I wish you could have heard some of the debate going on. They were quite serious about this, and you should all be very proud of your council. Okay. Clerk, can you report on the introduction of amendment to the tree ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park concerning tree removal has been introduced in writing by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
And just briefly, if I can just explain that, we are just clarifying the number of replacement trees for the diameter of the trees that would be removed. And we are not changing anything, we're just clarifying those numbers. So, thank you, yes.
All right. May I have a motion to adopt the following stored items? Resolution to approve the bills list. Resolution of concurrence with NJDOT in support of a no-passing zone on New Jersey Route 27. Resolution to approve taxi operator license, 2015. Resolution authorizing submission of National Recreation Trail Grant. Resolution to award contract to Home Energy Audit Services. Resolution to award 2015-2016 annual tree maintenance contract. Resolution to award tree planting bid. Professional Services Resolution, CME, 2015, reconstruction of various public roofs. Resolution to approve the purchase installation of blinds for Highland Park Police Department. Resolution to approve taxi owner license, 2015. Resolution to amend annual tech salary resolution. Resolution to amend personnel manual. Resolution to approve purchase installation of roller shades for Highland Park Police Department. Resolution to refund tax overpayment, tax appeal, Block 190, Lot 4.02-4.06. Resolution to support Assembly Bill A 1109, stricter rules and regulations for organizations that house and care for individuals with developmental disabilities. Resolution to authorize scheduled 2015 online auction of surplus property. May I have, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Just before I say I made my decision, resolution, the concurrence of New Jersey DOT supporting no-passing zone, that was brought up earlier in our conference agenda. And what that is, is those yellow lines, you know how you have two yellow lines stacked? There's a stop before, there's one stop with a yellow, and then there's another one? It's just reinforcing that you're not supposed to be cross, you should not be crossing over those lines. You should stop where the stop sign is and wait for the light to change because there's always people going in and out to go into a specific driveway or intersection. And with that, I vote yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. I am appointing the following, Linda Tondow to the Ethics Board. And may I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. The following are being appointed, Dr. Gar Rita to the Human Relations Commission, and the following members are being appointed to the Community Emergency Response Team, Joanna Joseph, Alyssa Kaplan, Matthew Hirsch, David Taywell, Pamela Pleistock, Muriel Haber, Brian Duchesne, and Roberto Munoz. Any public discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we will be, may I have a motion to adjourn to conference meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.